Welding Society's Annual Convention and Welding Show in Chicago. And that's from November the 11th through, November 17th through the 21st.
I move that we accept the agenda with the revisions suggested.
Do you have a motion and a second? Any questions or comments? I don't know. Where are we putting it?
Did I see someone in the audience, though, that's here in case we need to ask them?
Yes, Ms. Willis is here.
Can we put that?
We'll put it right at the beginning.
Yeah.
All right, I can go ahead and say it. Okay. Do we have any citizens' comments? Seeing none. Any motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Powers and a second by Mr. Kennedy. All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Okay. Business and Support Services. Mr. Blocker.
The first thing on the agenda is to approve the donation of...
Oh, wait a minute.
Ma'am?
We added something.
I'm crazy. I wrote it down, too, WTI. I said, "We're gonna do that first." Sorry.
And then she can go ahead and take care of the second item, too, as well.
I wrote it down and went and typed it. I just turned the page. I'm sorry.
I'm here to request out-of-state travel for Joe Charmantaro, my welding instructor, to participate in the Welding Society's, American Welding Society's Annual Convention and Welding Show in Chicago, Illinois, from November 17th through the 21st. And by attending this convention, he will be able to see new techniques being used to test welds and as well as learn about the new requirements being used in industry.
Okay.
And all of his expenses will be covered by Workforce Development Fund.
I, uh, I'm going to say. I move approval for out-of-state travel requests to participate in the American Welding Association's Annual Conference and Welding Show in Chicago, Illinois, from November 17th to the 21st.
Second. We have a motion from Mr. Kennedy and a second by Ms. Powers. Any questions?
Um, Ms. Willis and Joe can answer this, too, if he wants, but how's our placement going from our graduates in welding?
Well, one you should ask.
I kid you not. I, I, we didn't have this arranged.
No, I, um, we've been working on our annual report, which is due in December. And for Mr. C's class, the requirement is a 60% completion rate, and he has 74%. And we are not finished yet. We have until the end of December to complete the report. We have a 77% placement rate, and 70 is the minimum. And his licensure is, we don't include those, but just about all of his students receive the AWS industry certification.
And Joe, how many girls do you have doing right now? Because, yeah, I was gonna say, it's not uncommon, so...
The shop foreman.
Shop general foreman.
Yes, is a female.
That's probably running a lot smoother than...
First-time member, 25 years.
Wow. That's great.
Does a great job.
Thank you, Joe.
Okay. All in favor? Aye. Motion carries five zero. What else you got for us?
Okay. A donation from Duke Energy. I'm here to answer any questions. Yes. You want to start with questions, or you want me to tell you what I'm...
Well, first, let's make a motion to approve the $100,000 donation to Duke Energy.
Thank you, Ms. Dorchman. Second. Thanks, Ms. Powers. We have a motion by Ms. Dorchman and a second by Ms. Powers.
And my question was, how are you getting this money?
Yes. As you are aware, the High Tech Corridor runs from Tampa to Orlando and then to Gainesville, and it's showing a dramatic increase in the need for skilled workers. There's also been a passage by the Florida, a bill passed by the Florida Legislature that provides a sales tax exemption on manufacturing equipment, and it is the incentive for business needs in our community. So we're looking at probable job increase in the overall industry. And we're trying to stay ahead and prepare our students for these high-skill, high-wage jobs. And so we're gonna be starting a new program in August called Automation and Production Technology. And this program will prepare students for the Manufacturer Skills Standards, MSSC certification, and the production, or the Certified Production Technician Certification. And it will include Megatronics, Robotics, Automation, Basic Electricity, Programmable Logic Controls, Mechanical Drives, Fluid Power, and CNC machining. So with the money, we are going to be purchasing some trainers from a company we're looking at called Armatrol. And we've been working very closely with a representative for the, from the company. And we're looking at maybe take, we want to attract those students who are in the Project Lead the Way. It's kind of an extension of that program at La Panta High School. And so, and we also heard that there's some large company, logistical companies that are looking at the villages. And we have been very involved with the Marion Regional Manufacturers Association, attending their workshops, going to their trainings, sending people to be trained. And, and they've also come to our school and recruited students. So there's, there's work out there.
You know, I have a funny story. Mike, as you know, my Alex has a, my son Alex has a master's degree in architecture from Georgia Tech, and he was a Citrus High School graduate. And he runs a CNC machine. He actually is running a large automated, 30,000-square-foot furniture manufacturing plant now helping to do that. And, and wants to get certified in welding. So, you know, it's funny. You don't know where your path is gonna take you. He should've just gone WTI.
We try to do that. We are trying.
He's saving me a lot of money.
Well, when we see, that's the students that we're seeing. We're seeing them six years after graduating from high school, and our goal is to get these kids right after graduation.
It's amazing the opportunities that are out there. I had no idea. And he has a hard time trying to find people that have those skills in L.A. and all places. We can send them out there when you get them.
We can, right?
When are you projecting with that donation? When are you projecting that that program will be able to be up and running?
August.
So you'll have staff in place, machinery in place?
We're gonna use our Carl Perkins grant to fund the position. And then, so that'll be posted as soon as we get approval for the grant, which is an allocation for the Carl Perkins grant.
In square footage?
I have a, the old electrical, yes, I have an old, the old electrical shop, if you recall that. We moved electrical to carpentry in that room, and so we have that all cleaned, ready to go.
And will there, will there be any kind of cooperative program between the electric, the welding, so there'll, there'll be a piggyback?
Yes.
Okay. So when students come in, there's gonna be, she was painting that picture of her son, there'll be a guidance there, step one, step two, okay?
Our goal is that students leave WTI with more than one credential. And as you know, their funding, that, that's the way our funding is going, is students to earn all these industry certifications that are on the funding list. So there's no more of going into auto collision and just earning the industry certification from NATF. I mean, you have to have credentials across the board. So we want to provide students with as much opportunity as possible.
It seems pretty much like that, like Pat was saying, Anderson, what degree you got. You're venturing into a land that's going toward the college level of training rather than what you...
Because what the college students need in order to be able to be, have jobs in the industry that's no longer doing what they were taught to do.
Correct.
But all the other peripheral stuff that supports that industry.
Correct. And you know, the tech centers, I'll just take a commercial break. The tech centers have a legislative agenda for the next session, and one of our agenda items is to be called a technical college. And I think that will attract a lot of students, because no one wants their kid to graduate from high school and go to the institute or to the center. They want them to go to college. And if you look across the United States, when technical schools changed their name, all of a sudden it became okay for your child to go to a technical school. That's, and we've been talking about this in Mr. Kennedy's past... Yes. And I think it's time. We had the attention of a lot of legislators, and I think the time is right, and we're trying to make it happen as soon as possible. So we are ve, I feel very good about this year's session. And I have a handout, so I'll, I'll leave that with him.
Does that mean, Denise, that all technical schools can be considered colleges?
That's what I would like. I'm not asking for a change in governance.
Do you have to have a post-secondary program to do that?
Yes, we do.
And would the high school students be also students of the college?
Yes.
Oh, very cool.
They would just be coming over like they do now, shared students.
It's gonna take the legislation to allow that to happen?
That's the right way to do it.
Okay.
That's not the only way, but that's the...
Correct way? That's the correct way?
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Motion carries five zero.
Just want to address one thing to Joe. You know, we do the Festival of the Arts, and we'd love to have some of your work, some creative productions from your students. If you could look in that direction when you have some time, that would be wonderful.
Metal sculpture.
Metal sculpture, aye. Thank you.
Okay. Johnny Bishop. No. Approve the budget. I'm sorry. I'm getting, I'm getting all confused today.
Budget amendment one.
And your budget amendment one.
Oh, our presentation's not until five. Okay. So I was looking at this little mark up here.
It confused me, too.
I'm waiting on that one.
Approve budget number one for the current fiscal year.
I would like a motion to approve budget number one, number 2014.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Powers and a second by Mr. Kennedy. Do we have questions or comments?
If you look at page three, that kind of gives you the majority of the, of the changes, specifically the general fund. The majority are ins and outs. New revenue came in, so we appropriate the dollars that equal the new revenue sources. But there were some appropriations that we had to appropriate to schools for class-size reduction. We had to give out some units to some certain schools. Renaissance, Renaissance was the ESE student, teacher, homeless asset. Citrus Springs, Forest Ridge. So we had to go out in units to make those, those class-size reductions, which we did essentially so far that we know we did meet class-size reduction. We haven't been told otherwise. We had to budget for educational supplements that people came into the district that we did not budget for them because they were new to the district. So those were some things that we did, the changes to the budget.
Mr. Blocker, just also on page five, the VBK program, VPK.
Voluntary PK.
Yeah. That, it looks like we're, it looks like we're down by 40,000. Is that due to enrollment, or is that due to...
That's revenues, so the estimate on enrollment would probably estimate...
Would do that. So we're just down in our numbers? Okay. You know, yeah.
Thank you. All right. All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome, sir. Now, Mr. Bishop.
Good afternoon. I'd like to request the board's approval of instructional support recommendations.
We take out Thoreau. She does the junior achievement. Thoreau Cook over at IMS.
Oh, that's who does it over there, yeah. And they always brag about her, too.
Yeah. She's so good.
And that's one we'll take out.
I like that. We can have one. That would be great.
Well, they have long resigned. It's going to a different district.
Yeah, she's going to a different district. She's my son's teacher, that's why.
Oh, my word.
Gentlemen.
Could I have a motion?
I move approval of the instructional support recommendations.
Second. We have a motion by Ms. Dorchman and a second by Ms. Salfour.
Mr. Kennedy, once you want, we are in the district and already called that.
Thank you.
But it says resignation from drop. It doesn't say resignation. That's why I was a little confused.
Oh, why it says that?
I'm sorry, Tom. What's the question?
Karen Reynolds.
Christopher High School.
She's got her on the drop.
Resignation from drop.
I think it's actually supposed to be on the other.
I'll double-check that.
Yeah, I think it needs to go up one.
Can we have a motion to approve it with that amendment?
We did. Oh, we have the amendment.
I want to change my motion to include, are you sure about that, then?
It, I'll, I'll double-check that, and I'll let you know.
Unless it's a drop.
Karen Reynolds.
Thank you. All right. All those in favor? Aye. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Dixon's coming up, and we've got four things that are pretty much all the same. So let's just lump them together.
Good afternoon.
Aye.
We have four policy revisions to advertise for this evening. The first is a request for a public hearing on January 14th, 2014, to approve the revision of policy 4.72, homeless students. And this language adds 1C, which defines the term certified homeless youth, adds citation 382.002 Florida statutes, and changes the word or the term vocational to career in section 7D. This matter was discussed by the Policy Informants Committee on June 20th and presented at the October 29th School Board Workshop. Be glad to answer any questions.
We're just talking homeless students here, right?
Yes, ma'am.
We have a motion.
With your permission, can we lump these all with...
I don't, I think we need to do them separately.
Separate them separately?
Yeah, and I've got one that I want to dance a question with.
Okay.
All right, so I'll, I'll move approval of placing policy 4.72 to homeless students. What are we asking for? For public hearing?
Proved to advertise.
Advertise, so public hearing. At what meeting?
January 14th.
Why does it say June 20th? Oh, that's when it was presented. That or 14th. I guess it is right there.
Second. Thank you, Ms. Powers. We have a motion by Ms. Dorchman and a second by Ms. Powers. Any further questions? All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Motion carries five zero.
The next request is to advertise for a public hearing at the same School Board Meeting on January 14th for a revision to policy 5.321, bullying and harassment. This policy has been revised to comply with Florida State statute. It defines cyberbullying and additional scope of policy provisions. This matter was discussed by Policy Informants Committee on October 17th and presented, presented at your October 29th workshop. And I'll be glad to answer any further questions.
Do we have a motion?
I make a motion to approve for advertising for the public hearing on January 14th for the policy 5.321, bullying and harassment.
Second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. We have a motion by Ms. Salfour and a second by Mr. Kennedy. Any questions or comments?
Comment from Christopher River High School students to be sure that when we're looking at bullying, we, we don't just concentrate totally on cyberbullying or electronic bullying, but to keep the old...
It's a...
I know this doesn't do it. They were, that sort of reassurance, and we wouldn't pass it over, so...
It's, it's still in there. It's just adds the cyberbullying.
So, Mr. Bradshaw, you were not here when you had the discussion the last time I gave you some questions that came up. And one of the things that concerns me is the one B, number five. So, so it says that you, any, anything that you use off-campus is not school-related. Somehow limiting your ability, victim's ability to participate in school functions is prohibited, but yet it says we're not required to monitor any non-school-related function or programs. So how do we even know?
It's brought to your attention.
Okay, so the student comes into school and says, "Somebody wrote something bad about me on Facebook, on my Facebook page." Do we have to be responsible? What do we, what, if we're saying it's prohibited, what is our responsibility to do something about it?
I think that if it rises to the level of bullying, then we have to conduct a little investigation. But we don't have to go out, look, search, and make sure that students aren't talking outside of school.
So, if we have a question, something, I mean, I guess, I, I just don't...
I'm sorry.
I just find some of this language in here requires us to have to intercede on something that we, is completely and totally out of our hands. And at what point do we have a liability for not being able to stop it?
I think what would have to happen is, first off, if it's brought to our attention, if it's brought to our attention, then, you know, obviously you have to have cooperation with the student or whoever it is, you know...
If they've done the budget...
To be able to do it. If it's constituted bullying, then we have to go through our bullying procedures. But we don't have an affirmative duty to go out there and search the internet and make sure that students aren't bullying each other.
Thank you.
Although there are companies that are, that are other school districts saying, hey, we can monitor this stuff for you. And my suggestion would be to know.
So, are you saying that if policy gives us the ability to suspend a student from school who's writing something about another student on Instagram or Facebook or wherever social media that they are, or just talking amongst themselves on Saturday afternoon?
If it rises to the level of bullying, I think that's what the intent there is.
It has to provide a disruption at the school.
Right, enhanced...
Except, and I, I would have argued that except the one line, and I'm going back to it, that concerns me is C. Has affected, has the effect of substantially disrupting the orderly operation of the school, and that's been kind of generally the case. But then it goes on to say, "At a specific person that causes substantial emotional distress in such a person and serves no legitimate purpose." That's a very broad...
No legitimate purpose.
Can you...
Oh, I'm sorry, sir. I'm sorry. It's gonna be on page 11, and it's gonna be on C from the top down. Mr. Bradshaw, I understand that was taken out of, or is statutorily required language. So, I mean, in the past, we've talked that if it disrupts the school learning environment, and we've talked about the example of they do things outside of school, they come to school, and they're like, you know, and everybody's fine. If the student indicates that this has caused substantial emotional distress, and I would gather to say that in some of these cases, that's what that student, the parent would, of the alleged victim would say, where's that now fall into that bullying?
Probably places a little more burden on us.
That's, I mean, because that's, that to me makes a major change for us.
Well, I think the key, though, where it says substantially interferes with or limits the victim's ability to participate in or benefit from the services, activities, and opportunities offered by the school. If a student is concerned about coming to school because of a threat that they received...
But then on C, it just says, "That causes substantial emotional distress in such a person and serves no legitimate purpose."
The last three words.
I have no clue what that means.
But I'll say that when I was at Citrus High School, that came up in one of the classes, too, and they asked about if something happens outside of school, then how did the school punish something outside of school? The answer I gave was the answer that we, we have it in code.
This may change, probably, but we've changed our code. Get the pilot going, so...
Yes. But what is no substantial purpose or no legitimate purpose, second?
I'm trying to think of an example of legitimate purpose.
But we're thinking, I can't think of...
For it, I, I can't off the top of my head, but I'm assuming that if, if you have a right-by-law of posting something or doing something, you know, and that person thinks that it's, they're being bullied because of it, but legally you are allowed to, then that would probably be a legitimate purpose that we can't, you know...
If somebody was arrested and it's public knowledge, and you state that, it's not bullying because you've informed some of them that they...
Correct. If it's a, so, I can't think of a really good example off the top of my head, but if they're doing something that's legal, and sometimes, you know, bullying can, you can do things that are illegal that are still bullying, and then just by words or actions, then systematically you can do something that's not unlawful, but you caused bullying to someone. But if it's a legitimate purpose, like I said, I can't think of it off the top of my head, but if it's something that is legal or something they're allowed to do, or, you know, just, we got to figure it out.
But hasn't, hasn't the, have, have schools been challenged for disciplining students who wrote something bad about their teacher on Facebook, and they're saying, "You can't do that"? That's overreach?
Correct. It's a violation of a person's rights.
So...
Because I think this talks about like creating a Facebook, a false Facebook page and everything. And there is case law out there where students create, I won't give anybody, you know, ideas on what they do, but, you know, they're creating false Facebook pages of teachers, of students, things like that.
I think it only references student bullying. It doesn't reference...
So, and, you know, they tried to discipline for it, and they said that it's a violation of a person's rights, so I would make sure that they, that someone...
Well, here's the other concern that I have, and not that I'm against having any rules or, you know, discipline for bullying, but a lot of it is in the eyes of the beholder. So, and I'm talking to schools, especially even elementary schools, where students claim to be a victim of bullying, and, and schools have done a lot of investigation, including escorting the student back and forth to class, and making sure that there's a lot of extra education for the student. And at the end of the day, they found no evidence at all that there was really any bullying going on. You know, it might have been a situation where someone was teasing another student, and they missed, they just overreacted, and we had a issue, we had a discussion today about that, whether or not is it really bullying, or is it something else? And we are required to go to an awful lot of effort to intercede. This actually requires more of us now, I think.
Yeah, it's brought to our attention.
Yeah. So, I mean, it's, it's almost the argument of the, of the, you know, the 24/7 school police, yeah.
And, and there are, line of jurisdiction now becomes a little more gray, because in the past, I know I've received information at times where a parent who used to be in our school district, student was, was getting comments back and forth. Well, that really, you know, this, the, you know, the alleged victim student is no longer in our school system, while the student may be, but their activities are outside of the school day, and there's no substantial impact to the school. Prior to this, would argue, really, we have no jurisdiction. You need to call the Sheriff's Department.
And it all goes back to, we're revising this policy and here today talking about this policy because of state statute compliance.
This is, this is the language that comes around to the bullying statute.
That's what they, that's it. So the state statute is basically guiding this discussion in the creation of this policy.
They could, they could create some issues. I mean, if someone is no longer in the, you know, the Citrus County School, if someone has graduated and is doing it, obviously you can't suspend or do anything to the student if it's already graduated. If they're in another school district, you know, you can't do anything to that student, you know, besides maybe report it over to that school district to see if they can do something. Or, you know, substantial...
The term here, substantial emotional distress, you hear certainly emotional distress in lots of situations thrown around, perhaps appropriate or inappropriate. Is there something that, when I hear substantial in legal terms, I, I question, is there something that has, you know, in court cases or, you know, that, that defines what that is to help us in being able to say, you know, the, what that level determines? I feel bad today, and he made me feel sad, and so I didn't come in. Does that classify it, or now I'm on medication and I'm going to therapy?
Yeah, I like the definition of potential or potential emotional distress is if someone of an ordinary, a common person, you know, wow, you know, or, you know, that's something beyond bounds, and what do we expect? I don't know, research, what substantial emotional distress is, and wow, that's important.
It's a little higher than just simply, "He felt nervous coming to school."
I'm looking at the committee.
And why, I can research your file, but we all have a different topic.
Yeah, that sounds good. And I'm just going back to the, the committee, those of you that served on the committee. Is there someone that served on the committee that's here that can help bring light to why these words were chosen to comply with state statute?
It's right out of the statute.
Is... Is strictly right out of the statute. So the bottom line is, looking at the wiggle room that we have, we're looking for clarification, but we have no wiggle room at all. So at this point.
I think the legislature adopted new statutes in reaction to some bullying events.
And we said next year is going to be probably much worse as a result of the student committing suicide.
Correct.
You know, and we're not here discussing changing the words. I think what we're here is saying, what does this mean for us? How do we respond to this language? What does this mean that we're not going to be responsible for? Trying to find that out.
I think it actually, it just brings it like what Mr. Kennedy was talking about, you know, what happened off campus and stayed off campus, you know, we really didn't, unless they brought it on the campus and caused a disruption at school, and they expand that a little bit more, or, you know, you'll have to do more investigation and things. It doesn't eliminate any old sheriff's office and have them, you know, conduct an investigation. It's just also placed a little more burden on us.
With no money attached.
And arguably, though, the concern that I have is that it's putting more burden on us than it is even critically, because it sounds like our, the burden of proof that we have to use is going to be lower than, say, if there was a legal complaint made.
Well, if it's a criminal complaint, our burden of proof is a lot less, obviously.
Right.
Because that's the law.
When previously, we weren't even necessarily a part of the barrier.
Correct.
So, and that, that I do think is going to involve some man hours that we currently don't typically are dealing with, because once it rose to a certain, you know, if it didn't rise to a certain level, then the phone, you know, there was, there was no investigation. It didn't meet those certain criteria. In this case, now we've got personnel that's going around, and with the amount of Facebook traffic, texting traffic, that now becomes an off-campus situation, that is, that could be an interesting economic challenge for us. So, I think that just needs to be lifted out as well, but.
Let's look at the levels of investigation, too. The first level says that it did not rise to the level significantly, the volume of usage or setting of the usual, and that might be the end of the investigation, but if it did, so continue.
And I agree, and that's why I think some of those we have to find out, so that we, even though, you know, what statute says, it will be found.
And it is the stage of this, this, we're looking at the motion that I made, and somebody did second, correct, and broke into discussion, so just to readdress that motion again, to advertise for this policy, again, policy 5.321, it's just a, back to, just restating the motion that was on the floor with a reminder of the second, with discussion, any.
Any further discussion?
I'm looking at it for what it is, we're just letting them advertise, and this staff is going to have to do a step-by-step default in compliance.
And I'm sure the state's going to pay us extra money.
Sure.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
The next one is the third request. This is a request to advertise for a public hearing at January 14th, 2014, school board meeting to approve the revision of policy 5.621, student medications. This language adds section two, emergency medication, to reincorporate the EpiPen that we had taken out last year or this year. And this matter was discussed by the Policy Informs Committee on September 19th and presented to an October 29th school board workshop. And I'd be glad to answer any questions if you have them.
Mr. Bradshaw, this is.
Let me get a motion first, Thomas.
I'm hoping to let you. Request to advertise for a public hearing at January 14th, 2014, school board meeting to approve the revision of policy 5.621, student medications.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Powers. Motion by Ms. Deutschman and a second by Ms. Powers. Go ahead, Mr. Andy.
That's okay. Mr. Bradshaw, this was another one that we kind of talked about, and when we talked about it, one of the issues that I brought up was where suntan lotion and lip balm, for example, come into this? And we've had this, and I, there was a suggestion, or there was an option brought up by our health coordinator, that there could be an exemption list, or that we could include that some districts had dealt with it by saying suntan lotion, lip balm, or whatever else we put on that list would not be then, or would be acceptable.
I don't know of any exceptions to the, I don't know of any exceptions except for the four that are listed at the statute as far as carrying medications, which we're talking about.
I think Citrus High School also asked if that would be carried to the decision-makers about lip balm and also about cough drops.
Well, it also would be considered medication.
Yes, yes. Exactly.
Correct. So as far as, I mean, if they're classified as any type of, as a medication, they're not allowed?
I think that's what we were.
That's what we're, that's exactly the question, because I think that determination, it seems to be a different interpretation based on the health, you know, the health services portion of our district and perhaps what we all do.
Well, are you asking, can we create a list that we're going to make it?
Well, that was, that was what was brought up at the last meeting, was that there was.
The one you missed.
And in that, because to me, one of the issues that we talk about is sunscreen. Sunscreen is an issue that our students and, you know, that we talk about, that the protection in the skin, well, right now, it's interpreted and understood by the principals that sunscreen is a medication, and the health, and the health clinics, I believe, view it as a medication and therefore cannot be something a student brings. So therefore, we're saying students cannot protect their skin unless they put it on before school, which would have a minimal effect, because it would've worn off by the time most of them got to the outside.
Well, they can always put it in the clinic, yeah.
That became an issue that.
No.
You've got to have a doctor's note now.
But we have protocol being written by the doctor that's going to allow the use of any over-the-counter medicine that's registered the same way as prescription medicine being allowed to be used, as long as it's used according to the directions that are on the label to, to, not to, to make sure that over-the-counter medicines can be taken to school, put in the clinic, that have been, the nurses feel that they are still operating under doctor's orders at that point in time, and so we're talking about, we'll be moving that issue.
What we were looking at was.
I was just going to say, that to me is, with 15,000-plus students, it seems overkill. And then we're talking about lip balm is included in that.
Yeah.
It just seems like that it's, it's far overkill.
You've got clarification.
I think, I think we're all talking the same thing. I think one of the things that came up, knowing that we have some protocol by Dr. Dallas, one of the questions came up, in the past, we have not had a protocol for students to bring in sunscreen, lip balm, chapstick, cough drops. And I think the question, if I remember correctly, was could a list of those particular items that are used often enough, could a protocol be written by Dr. Dallas so that parents could bring this in, put it in the clinic, and then the HRA or the nurse could dispense it when needed? That was the question.
I didn't understand that we talked about, though, in that regard, that the clinic dispensed some of those, like lip balm and, because that would, just even from a, I mean, so are we going to have, you know, in an elementary school, 40 kids coming through the clinic every time recess happens to put it on?
And what Jessica's doing now is she's trying to generate a list. She's gotten in touch with all the nurses to find out what are some of these over-the-counter meds that are used regularly, like suntan lotion and lip balm? And at this time, I'm not prepared to share with you what's been found and/or if we can get a protocol for it.
How much wiggle room we have as a board to define what lip balm requiring that to be listed as a medicine? I just have a concern with that.
There are only certain medications, like Mr. Bradshaw was saying, that statutes that students can carry on them. There's only four of those that statute allows. Other medication cannot be carried by a student, but is lip balm considered a medication?
Well, that's what I was going to say.
And that's.
And that's really where I think that question lies.
Yes, and we're still, we're still researching our report before we get to Mr. Bradshaw. And it depends what kind, because I have some that is not a medication, it's Bobby Brown, that would be when I go to the grocery store and buy, it would say medicated on it. It depends on which kind.
So are we saying then for the issues of this policy, then nothing would be, need to be adjusted in the policy to accommodate that? Or are those things that we would, in essence, classify as non-medications, and then it would be just dealt with through a guideline or over through administratively, as opposed to the policy?
That's the direction we're going, yes.
Okay, then I'm, then I'm good. That was what I was.
Okay.
I don't know of any other district that is doing what you're talking about, Mr. Kennedy, as far as establishing a list of the considerations of non.
That was what they, that was what they spoke to us about at the last one.
I'll, I'll look and see.
And again, I think it maybe the answer is, is that they don't, that the list is what they consider to be non-medications.
Well, I know cough drops are non-medications.
Cough drops I could see, because they do have a certain amount of alcohol in some of them and so forth. Sunscreen, you know, and I think in some of those cases, it has to do with the active ingredient in them.
Correct.
And, you know, pretty much chapstick and sunscreen, that becomes then that issue, which I still have concerns about where we're talking, the skincare cancer issues that we've been, you know, faced in the country, and I know parents keep frustrated, they can't send their kid to sunscreen, so. But if we're, if we're dealing with it that way, then I have no problem, I can move forward.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero.
Item number four is, the final one, is to request to advertise for a public hearing at the January 14th, 2014, school board meeting to approve revision of policy 6.61, HIV/AIDS or other communicable diseases, bloodborne pathogens, and environmental hazards. This policy language adds citation 1013.12 and 1013.42 Florida statutes. This matter was discussed by the Policy Informs Committee on June 20th and presented at the workshop on October 29th. Again, the only changes are the two citations. First citation is casualty safety sanitation and fire safety standards and inspection of property, and the second one is the school infrastructure thrift program.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve, to advertise for a public hearing at the January 14th school board meeting for the revisions of policy 6.61.
All ready? In a second. Second. Got a motion by Ms. Balfour and a second by Ms. Deutschman? Do we have questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero. It is now five o'clock, and we have presentations.
To the, Ms. Brown, would you come forward, please? Today, we are excited to be able to honor three of our students who we believe have made a big difference in Citrus County schools, and I'll have Ms. Brown call the students up, and then she'll give you a little history on them.
Well, first of all, it is a pleasure and an honor to be here to celebrate our children. I just want you to know, our little guys at Crystal River Primary School are so sweet and kind and caring, and these three represent us very well. Now, I have brought my eyewitness.
Soundly ribbon.
My eyewitness to.
He does. He looks like him.
This is their teacher, Nikki Wardlow, and she was on the trip where this event occurred, so she's going to tell what happened that day, and then I think some of our children might talk, too.
Okay.
Well, we were at bicentennial pool, and we had been running rescue drills the day before, and so our students were learning that if they saw someone in need, the first thing they should do is call for help and then try to help the person in need. And we were getting out of the pool, getting ready to run one last little exercise before we change for the day, and I hear students yell, the bus driver has passed out or something like that. So I look over, and he is on the ground, and my students did exactly what they were supposed to do. I kind of messed up a little bit, because Blake is shaking his head, yes, you did. I did exactly what we told them not to do, and I yelled, someone call 911. And I was not specific when I yelled for help, because we were teaching them to point to a person and say, you in the pink shirt, or if you knew someone's name, to, you know, to say, it was, hang in stock, call for help. And I just yelled, somebody call 911, and everybody stared at me, because they thought I was running a drill with my students as we were getting out of the pool. So then, when I hollered it again, even louder, they realized, and everyone jumped into action. But with the position where the bus driver was sitting, we would not have noticed him right away if my students, when they were walking by, had not seen it happen. So Blake was another eyewitness, and Blake could tell you exactly what he saw, because he just remembers it. What was the bus driver doing?
First, the bus driver was, he was waving his shirt like he was hot, and he was, and then he started sweating, and then he passed out, because I think it was heat exhaustion.
Okay, with that, I would like to present this certificate to Blake. Thank you. At this moment, can we get a picture? To Morgan?
Thank you.
And to Jessica. Okay, Blake's going to introduce who's with him today.
Well, Tanya, come up.
And Connor.
You were talking with your brother.
And Morgan, who's with you today?
Michelle.
Michelle. And then Jessica Barnes.
My hair can.
Nice job. Excellent. Very good job. You've got another grandchild, but you said Brian.
Okay, the next award that we will present today goes to Jessica Barnes, and I think all of you are familiar with Kaylee's Coats and Jess, Kayla's, Kayla's. And Jess, would you like to talk about it?
Yeah, I would, thank you. At least a little one, so pardon me. So Kayla's Coats is a nonprofit organization. We just, in March, we got our nonprofit, and we're all finally good to go with that. But it's in memory of our daughter Kayla that drowned in 2010, and our mission is to provide coats to children within the Citrus County. That was originally how it started. We've kind of expanded to drowning prevention and awareness, swim lessons, and then we would like to get into life jackets. So that's our, where we want to go. But we delivered last week, and I have my last bag up for Flo, so you're right now, over a thousand coats.
My house. This year. And I just want to know, Jessica has a bag also.
Oh, good, because I have some I need to get to them. So wonderful. This is my husband, Sean.
Hi, I see her.
Thank you.
And thank you.
Thank you.
For impacting all of our kids.
Thank you.
I just want to share with the other board members, Ms. Wardlow has an amazing technology classroom, and I would encourage you, if you're at Crystal River Primary, to stop in there and let her show off her students to you, enter QR codes, and just some great manipulatives that she does with the, with the MimiO, and she's just a great teacher, so.
Fudged update, Mr. Walker. Bring him up with you. It's all not big, but it can.
That's the expression you have every time you get something straight.
All right, just a couple of items. We're still waiting to see what Duke does. I think we're all anticipating it, but I did look, last year, they noticed us on November 28th with the tax collectors, what they're doing, so I assume we will know something as to what they're doing right before Thanksgiving, since Thanksgiving is the last week of the month, they will probably notice the tax collector, the property manager, as to what they're doing with their payments, so.
Is that their idea of Thanksgiving? Is that their idea of Thanksgiving?
I don't I don't know that. It's just my anticipation.
Okay.
You heard anything different or? Yeah, that's what I'm anticipating.
Is there Thanksgiving grinch, Jessica?
There also should be a court decision coming up here pretty soon?
I think it's like November fifteenth. There was a rule on the which is this week.
Friday.
Friday. The pollution control devices. And then sometime in the spring, as far as the actual trial for the value of the property, who I understand.
Wes, wouldn't that pretty much be the ballgame, though, for the most part? I mean, that was what I thought much of their case was around for the previous years.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's a two-part thing. One is what you can do with the pollution control devices and the valuation, and then just in general, the actual value of the property. But yes, it's the pollution control devices, I think, we need a court determination. They won't stop at this point. It will be appealed to the fifth, and I think there are ways of getting it to the state.
Either either party?
Yes.
You think it'll just still keep going?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
The only good thing that may happen is that if it gets appealed to the fifth and is certified, I mean, question of great public importance, it's a trade-off, it was a great board, just that they're trying to deal with that one, so it's a gamble.
The other item is in reference to the FTE count. We're still waiting on the number, the actual FTE count from the October calculation as DOE is still trying to figure out and recalculate. You know how they changed how they do FTE this year by splitting the minutes and everything with virtual schools and the brick and mortar school? I don't know if they haven't figured out how to do it yet, or they're still calculating it. It's a little bit more challenging than what they anticipated, so we're still waiting. We're told it could be into December as to when we find out what that actual number is. But if you just look at the the actual kids in the school system as we see it today, we're still down over a hundred kids from what we forecasted. So that's not the waiting, that's the unweighted, just from when we see the raw numbers. So that's where we're anticipating those to be. So we're still waiting. Hopefully, by the third count, we'll have some type of number because they'll have to have it to recalculate our FTE payment, so that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. I need a motion to approve the minutes.
Move approval.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Dorchman. Motion by Mr. Kennedy and second by Ms. Dorchman. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero. Attorney legal matters. Really? All righty. Board members, we'll start with well, plus Mr. Mullin, you haven't made?
No.
Ms. Balfour?
Ah, just yeah, we always talk about keep it simple as far as solutions to problems.
Kids.
Yes, the Homocentris Elementary, they have such a simple creative method for solving problems with substitute teachers being allocated keys because keys would get lost, misplaced at some times. And also, which classrooms have substitute teachers? And they just took a little small chunk of styrofoam like you would place around a pole to keep, you know, people from getting injured, and they cut it into sections about that big so it fits over the door. So when you are looking down a hallway, you can easily see at first glance where the substitute teachers are. So as an administrator, if you're if you're down that hall, those are your priority classrooms. It also solves the problem with the key situation. And I was just so impressed with that. It's just so simple.
What's the best way to deal with the key?
Well, because as a somebody that's dealing with the substitutes, when they come in and check in, you always have to worry about getting their room unlocked. So do you send them with the key? And then the key gets lost, and then you have to rekey the entire school. It could be a real problem. So just something that simple eliminates so many different concerns. Spent a good a good time touring in and out of every single classroom down there. It's just a really unique setting.
Yes, it is.
Very positive culture. A lot of good things happening. And I had the opportunity, some Mrs. Hamel out there and several others with our United States Congressman, that made it out to Crest facility to just share his thoughts about what patriotism means and what the the flag represents. And it was just for him to take the time, I was just very impressed. And he took the time to stay for a small reception with some of our Crest population, and I was very impressed with that. It was kind of a little spent. It was good to see out there, and I certainly appreciate how you brought him out to the front. You were kind of standing there, you you made nice nice impact. But a lot of good things happening. Thanks for letting me share this. You will please.
Four things. One is that from Crystal River High School, having all of ideas at the SAC meeting, one of them, Sheriff Darcy asked about using the media in recruiting more parents and more attendees at the SAC meeting. It's quite well intended, but more than what more to find and get different ideas. So I was going to talk to our media people in here, Chris, Mr. Kennedy, if you had some thoughts and some ideas, I would appreciate it. Second thing, on December the tenth, here at the board meeting, we have the festival of the arts for our presentation plaque to Citrus High School for winning in their box. And the actual box will be here, one about the communities. Next, I went over during our media draw that most of the Citrus High School talked about in dress code, but one of the things they mentioned in addition, which surprised me, we talked about uniforms. They would like to discuss uniforms, having uniforms. So one of the reasons at Citrus High School, one of the classes I spoke with, and one of the reasons was that it'd be much easier when you don't have to be involved with fashion, it would be cheaper. Dress code would not exist anymore, in general, because everyone would be dressed in the uniform. Students brought it up, surprised me, so I'm bringing it and telling you this. They also, again, another surprise, asked about having teachers and students adhere to a dress code, and they brought up something about yoga pants. I don't know what they are, but they didn't want to have students coded wearing yoga pants and.
They're see-through pants.
Adults, adults coming to the school or working at school, not to be, because they want the same rules for everybody. I've got a see-through yoga pants, I don't know what they were talking about, but it was very important.
Like, well, stretch.
Like, okay, they mentioned something about that, so they didn't want that.
Yes, they are.
They're all see-through.
No, but they did.
They don't leave a lot to the imagination sometimes.
They did say something about about see-through flouses. I like that class, they they wanted it to uniform dress code, if the student could wear it, no other adult coming to the school or working at school could wear it. So they were real strong on dress code, and I thought, y'all are playing a joke on me, aren't you? But they weren't. They brought up the specifics of what they were concerned about. Another thing they brought up was about using the phones between classes, and they'd heard that other schools could have telephones, that they could talk between class. They wanted to have that done also. And they kept uniforming, they kept saying, "If that school does it, then we can do it. If they don't do it, then we won't do it." Well, cough cough drops and chapsticks. And one of the last things I'm going to explore a little bit more, I was up in Washington, DC, visiting, and I didn't get to go to the Kennedy Center. However, I noticed that Kennedy Center had a changing education through the arts program, and they had signs up at different schools. So I'm going to explore that and investigate that, and I'll bring back the information to you.
Cool. That's it. Thank you. Mr. Kennedy?
Just there's been so much going on, but the one thing I guess I wanted to do was, and I'm sure Pat will talk more about it, but I wanted to thank Pat for putting together the SE, the SAC training and meeting. I I always enjoy it, as you know. I came out of that world. So I look around there and I see someday, you know, those that will follow us because they're very involved people. I was impressed with the administrators that wanted more enlightenment that they had thought had, and and my it was I would have sworn that they just took everything from that meeting and went to when I went out to IMS, it was their they had all the things that were being talked about, they started to incorporate. And they were doing a lot of those already, but they definitely stepped it up. So thank you for doing that.
I have one question.
That was it?
Okay. Ms. Dorchman?
So we did that, and we got a lot of good positive feedback. And one in particular, I can't remember who it was now, I think she was it was a principal came up to me and said, "You know, you know all this stuff, just don't help me to remember." It's really good to be reminded. She was she that she thought well of that, they hadn't been following a lot of the rules and regulations or whatever. So you know, something that we probably need to do on a yearly basis. Scott, he broke my paper, you copy of all the feedback, all the individual groups, like I said. And then also, Mrs. Hamel and I went to the IPS veteran statement. And the thing that was interesting about that, it's always very nice anyway. This is the first year that Laura Mas has been there as principal. And also, this is the last year that Sandy Cross is going to be there because she's retiring. She's the one that invented this.
She's not allowed.
Twenty-one years. I remember twenty-one years ago doing that. So it was very emotional because she was handing it over to my kindergarten teacher, who actually did the program. At the end of the event, they tip they have a parade that goes through the school and ends up at.
In the garden.
The garden, the veterans from Memorial Garden, they have refreshments. So she said, "I'm not gonna tell you how old he is, but there's a veteran here that's going to be a hundred years old in four years." And she said, "And I'm going to ask him to lead the parade, and he's my father." Wasn't that, I was just like, oh, and he was, he just jumped up and he, and now he's just telling me where he's going. Really amazing. Really was very nice. And it's funny that you would mention the dress code because I we did Citrus High School and by your counsel, I asked them, and they were, you know, it's it's the old like I talked to Vicki about this picking and battle. They don't play, don't want to have any battles on dress code. It's not that big of an issue. Nobody really cares. The APs field it, they're fine with it. I asked the students, students is on file with it. Everybody was fine with it. I went to the Ransons Center, and I think at one time, weren't they required to wear column shirts and cappy pants and all that?
I think they were strong. Gone, yeah. Gone, it was a column.
Yeah. So nice with it, so. And then I have one more thing, and I actually need Ms. Jeter to come with me. Okay.
I've got your back.
Somebody reminded me today, it's November. I was thinking it was all day, I'm thinking it's August. Why is this about we're talking about being in here? It's only August.
Wrong. It's November.
So we are at the last meeting of Citrus chairmanship.
I think it's the hand that gathered.
And we are going to, I'm going to read the bat, the, uh, the, uh, the plaque to Virginia Bryant in recognition of your dedication to student success and leadership as chairman to discuss the War Two Thousand Twelve, Two Thousand Thirteen.
Thank you very much.
Somebody you got to be cool about. Favorite calendars, we've got, Mr.?
I have one. It caught my brain.
Thank you, Ms. Dorchman. Thank you for your great service.
I want to, are you, I'm, okay. I want to remind us of today's date. Now, I told my granddaughter to have her baby today, but she didn't. She had her baby on the sixth of November.
Oh, I see what it is.
But if she would have had her child today, her birthday would have been eleven, twelve, thirteen.
No, no.
And she would have had it at nine, ten this morning. Never mind.
Somebody, I bet, did.
I'm psycho. I want to remind everybody of our ethics training on December sixth. I think it's from eight to twelve. We'll do it together, okay?
Is it bad to lie about going to your?
I think it is. Can you cheat? Can you cheat on an ethics test? No. All righty.
Can we take a break between now and?
After I say something. Oh, Ms. Ms. Mullin, let's wait.
I know when you all get ready to do your reorganization, we always talk about the calendar, and I know in the past, we've really never scheduled or talked about, you know, definite fourth Tuesday for workshops, but I got a couple of dates that we can you all need to discuss, okay? The first one is, now, this isn't really your calendar, but I guess it is your calendar. In January, they do the science fair.
Okay.
Okay, so Monday, the kids set up. Tuesday.
It's the eighth of, wait, is it?
The twenty-eighth, January twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth, and through that lead, okay? January twenty-eighth is the day that you have a board workshop. Wednesday is a half a day. If we move judging to Thursday, it puts a lot of, there's a lot of scoring going on, a lot of things get ready for Friday night. So Mark and I met this morning, if it would be possible for the board to move that workshop to that Wednesday, because I know some of you all go judge and you like to visit, then because and the all train is not open on Wednesday, it's not available to us for Wednesday or Friday.
So Wednesday, we'll do our workshop, is that what?
If that's possible, January twenty-ninth.
That's positive.
Okay, so that's one heads up.
Okay.
Okay. The second one, next year, Veterans Day is on a Tuesday, which would be your.
Can we change that?
Well, it's Veterans Day, okay.
It's a national holiday.
My day was delightful. There were so many people at the parade. There were so many people in the parade. I mean, it really, they really.
And the people watching the parade were so delightful.
So here's the thought, your organizational meeting will be November eighteen. So would you be willing to take your second Tuesday of November and move it and have a meeting on the third Tuesday, which will be November eighteen, and do them both on the same day like we are today?
Absolutely.
Well, don't say absolutely. I.
I said absolutely my part. I just wrote one down.
But next year is an election year, so you have to have your organizational meeting on the third Tuesday.
And we're studying that policy, I think, tonight.
Well, that's statute. That piece of statute.
But I think we have to we have to change the policy to meet statute.
Thanksgiving is next week. It is the twenty-seventh. I just checked for you in my little train here.
Because on November eleventh, you know, we're in the parade, and then.
And nobody said filming here.
Staff is off that day, so.
Oh, that was that would have been our meeting day?
Yeah, the eleventh, November eleventh is your regular second Tuesday.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
So if you move your second Tuesday meeting to your third Tuesday, we could do the organizational meeting and your regular meeting in November on the same day, again.
November eighteen, does that work for you?
Are we having a workshop this month or not?
No, unless you want one.
No, we don't want one, but.
We don't have one in November and December.
Sometimes we do in November because. We have we have an organizational meeting, but we don't have to do that now.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah.
Those are the only two days on one.
Okay. Thank you. So now what am I doing? I'm so confused.
Quick break to five, is it five thirty? We have another time certain?
Five forty-five.
So five thirty?
Five thirty is public hearing. That was the revision, Wes, to two point two one that I was talking about.
Yeah, so I think, what, four?
It's a second opportunity to know for any subject at five forty-five.
Five twenty-four.
Oh.
Six minutes.
Oh, the public, oh, gotcha, sorry.
All right, right?
Five minutes. Take a five-minute break.